I'd like to call the Village of Norafonelag Village Board Trustees Meeting to Order Monday, March fifteenth. Due to the state of emergency related to COVID-19, the village will have limited seating at the board meeting. In addition to the board meeting being available on cable channel nine eighty, you're also able to dial in and listen or speak through the phone. If you'd like to call in, please dial nine two zero three two two six one two zero between five forty-five and five fifty-five on the day of the meeting. Audience members are requested to sign in at the sheet provided at the registration table. Citizens wishing to be heard on topics not listed on the agenda may speak under item C. Citizens may be given an opportunity to speak during discussion of items listed on the agenda and are allowed three minutes for comments. Disruptive discussion or profanity will not be allowed. Rule call of officers.
Duffy.
Here.
Horning.
Here.
Streeter.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Will.
Here.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, citizen participation, citizens are to address the board only. Statements are limited to three minutes. The board may not respond to items not listed on the agenda, however, you may ask for an item to be placed on future agendas. Any citizens wishing to be heard? All right. Announcements, any announcements tonight? Presence, business and staff reports, library, Heather.
Thank you. Ben, having the doors open for, to the public for this is our, we were open last week. And I just want to remind everybody that we also are continuing to do the curbside. So if anybody is still not comfortable with entering the building, we still offer our curbside services. So we've been working on summer reading program, take craft, take and make, so I just brought a little example of a no sock or a no sew panda bear that we're putting together. That's only one of the crafts, just as an example, that we've been working on putting together for our programming. And we'll be doing our in-person book club for the first time in a few, quite a few months here. So that will be, take place this Saturday. So if anybody would like to join us, you know, please let me know because I'm trying to make sure we do the seating and still respect the distancing. And they also have an option to join via Zoom, so people could also do that if they just contact me for a link. And we're also going to be starting back our storytimes Friday, April ninth. So that's about all I have.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Anything for the court. Administrator, Nick.
Thank you. As mentioned, audits, we finished up the audits two weeks ago, but last week was kind of some follow-up as there's always a few things outstanding. Got all that stuff taken care of and hope to have draft financial statements sometime in the next few weeks. They're planning on coming to one of the meetings in May to present to the board. So that, all, all things went really well again, so that's, that's good. Nothing really out of the ordinary, so until they're complete, you know, I don't know exactly how everything looks. Keeping a close eye on additional stimulus. If you recall, we got routes to recovery money, about ninety-four thousand dollars through the state. With this latest stimulus bill, there's another round of funding coming from the federal government. So, and it looks like it's going to be pretty sizable, but there's going to be some different requirements and possibly some different programs associated with it. So really too early to tell anything on that, but just kind of keeping an eye on that and keeping in touch with the league and where that's going to end up. I mentioned absentee voting, if anybody had requested an absentee, absentee ballot by mail, those did go out last week. I think we sent out like two hundred and seventeen. Can still request those. And then in, in-office absentee voting starts on March twenty-third and goes through the Friday before Easter. I don't know the date off the top of my head. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Nick. Police Department, Darren.
Thank you. So on the good news front, today officially marks the last day of winter parking restrictions. But in truth, we haven't been enforcing it for the last two weeks anyhow, so. But people don't have to worry about those restrictions anymore. They can just start parking in accordance with street signs and not have to worry about the even odd parking. We have spent the last week working on inventorying sexual assault kits that we have in our possession. For the last couple of years, the state's been working on a backlog of sexual assault kits and Department of Justice has implemented a plan to make sure that that never happens again. And part of that is that they have issued ID numbers, stickers to each agency. So we have to put those stickers on the sexual assault kits that we have, upload the information to their website, and then for all cases two thousand sixteen and newer, we actually have to upload the case reports, case files for those incidents. So we spent last week working on that and we got everything done on our end, so should be smooth sailing going forward. That's all I have.
Thank you, Darren. Fire EMS, Jake.
Thank you. I posted a job on Facebook about two weeks ago for paid-on-call firefighters, and we have three spots right now that are open. We received seven applications, so we've been working through that. Adam has met with one of them and offered him a job, so he'll be going through work steps, so on and so forth, but we plan on meeting with two or three more in the next week or two. A lot of my time has been spent reviewing and updating some of the SOGs and Ps as we've kind of moved away from some things and moved in a different direction. So it's been quite a bit of my time and Adam's time, as well as Eric's time, getting them back up to where they need to be. This month has been significantly more busy than the previous two. We've had seventy-four calls so far this month between fire and EMS, so it has been quite busy. And lastly, I have an MSAC meeting next week, March twenty-fourth. It's at the Eldorado Town Hall at six thirty PM if anybody's interesting in attending. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jake. Anything for public works?
Yeah, I'll say a few things. Mitch just recently completed the stormwater annual report, has been working on that the last few weeks. It's a lot of paperwork to take care of that's part of the, the NR's requirements, us being a MS four and having the annual stormwater report. So there's just a lot of, a lot of bookkeeping that needs to be done throughout the year in order to get the reports submitted. Also Mitch submitted the Tree City USA annual application basically, and I can't remember, we gotta be around twelve, twelve years or so that we've been a Tree City USA in a row. Best Shot Avenue will be starting right around April fifth is what they're shooting for at this point, so Mitch is busy ramping up with that project. They were out doing some cold patching of our streets, public works crew if you noticed, and with that, basically it's just a way of patching our asphalt without having hot mixed asphalt, it's just a different product they use. Usually try and get out right away in the spring and patch some of that stuff. And then they also been working on getting the parks ready. Usually we open those parks mid-April depending on the weather. I make sure by, by May they're open, but most of the time it's mid-April and, and we always want to make sure that there's no chance of freezing temperatures because of all the toilets and all that, so that's what they've been working on.
Thanks, Nick. Consent agenda, approve the minutes of the following village board meeting from March first and approve invoices and authorized checks to be drawn on respective funds as indicated. General Fund one hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents. Library Fund one thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. EMS Fund two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-three cents. Capital Projects twenty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars and thirty-one cents. Water Department fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and twelve cents. Waste Water Department four thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. Stormwater Fund eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Community Development Authority, TIF, seventeen dollars and ninety-six cents for a grand total of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. And also approve the following operator license for Jamie or for Charlie. So what is the board's pleasure?
I'll make motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
A second?
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Will, second by Price to approve the consent agenda as read. Are there any questions or comments on this? John, did you have something, John?
Nope.
Oh, anybody? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Moving down to administrative, number one, discussion of possible action on allowing three dogs to be licensed at ninety-two Broadway Street.
I can start that out. The homeowner stopped in and licensed their dogs and informed us that they were trying to license three dogs, which we then told them that that's, that wasn't allowed unless the board approval. And they are here tonight to explain that. I attached the letter that they sent. She had mentioned her father-in-law passed away, which made acquired the dog that way. I did check with the police department. We have had zero contact with that address for any pet complaints, so my recommendation is approves that, but I'll give you guys a chance to just go up to the podium here and, and speak if you'd like.
If you could please state your name and address.
I am Ray Style. I live at ninety-two Broadway Street. And we've had two dogs and for quite a while now, we haven't had any problem with them. We keep them, keep them chained up. We built a fenced-in area in our backyard a few years back. And back in June, my father passed away, and we always told him that if, if anything ever happened to him, we'd take the dog for him, take care of him. And we've had him now since, I said, June. Everything's been good. They don't get away. We take them for walks all the time and always on a leash. What we do have a problem is with when we walk down the street, the center, there's a German Shepherd that comes out all the time when we walk down that street unchained and circles us around. It's, it's happened a few times now and we've called about it. And just last week, I was taking a walk by myself and I walked by there and that dog was roaming around out of its yard.
Do you know about what address?
By any chance?
No, it's not, it's not in Center Street.
Okay.
I said, we've called and complained a few times now.
Is that between Thirken Chapman or between Minnesota and Wisconsin?
Between Minnesota and Wisconsin.
Okay.
I mean, it still runs, runs east and west.
Okay. Okay.
I just asked that we are allowing to keep our third dog. We don't plan on giving him up.
Okay. All right, thank you, appreciate it. Send anybody, oh, John.
Nick, we've had this conversation last time and we're going to talk about, you know, I have no problem with three dogs. I mean, that's not the issue. We were going to look at changing ordinance to allow three pets, as long as a licensed pet.
Yep.
Where does that stand?
So this brought that to, to my mind too. And my, if you recall last week or the week before, the meeting before, we had somebody request chickens. It's the same ordinance. So my plan is to, we can do that all in one fell swoop when we discuss that because it's in the same language. That'll save us some publications and things. Yes.
Thank you.
Good question.
Oh, yes.
My wife's been a better detective since she's worked at Companion Animal Care in Norafonelag. I don't know if you're aware of that. She's worked there since late open. She takes care of dogs very well.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments on this item?
I'll make a motion that we grant the exception as, as recommended by Administrator Leonard.
The, the only thing I'll just add to that, and short of us changing this, this ordinance at some point in the near future, if we go that route, fine, but normally when we do allow these, we do say that if one of them does pass or move out, that, at that point, you're back to the two dog limit.
Until the change, until the change happens.
Unless we change the ordinance, of course.
Yes, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'll say.
Second. Got a motion by Duffy and a second by Horning to approve the exception for the three dogs at ninety-two Broadway. Is there any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Good to go. Thank you for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving down to number two, discussion and presentation of subdivision drainage plan for Chappel, Fair Lawn, Prairie Fox Street and Thirke Avenue.
I'll just give a quick summary and then I'll have Mitch take, lead the conversation. Mitch, you might as well come up to the table here with the microphone for the recording. We've, we've been contacted over the years, I mean, even back before, you know, a long time ago, I've been involved with this, a few of the homeowners on Chappel over the years, about questions about the drainage and that in the backyards. And I know a couple of our board members have been contacted about it. So one of our board members had just asked, let's just talk about this at the board meeting, and I think it's a good conversation to have, to invite everybody and hopefully discuss what, what's going on. Just to start out, there's really no major concerns from our end or major issues. There might be some minor issues here and there, but looking forward and looking at the plan that's in place and, and has been in place for a long time, you know, I really don't see any issues that we're going to have with the drainage at all. There's just been, it's maybe causing some, some concerns or questions right now as, as things are, you know, one house is built and another house is built and maybe there's areas in between that aren't taken care of. The trees are becoming a possible discussion point, but for the most part, I think, you know, Mitch has, has got the, the work he's done, he's looked into and has this, this map to present, but I'll just start out by saying that, there really, from our standpoint, there's really not any major concerns or, or questions moving forward as far as how everything's going to work. It looks like it's going to work just fine. So with that, I think maybe to start with, just kind of to walk, have Mitch walk through this plan and what he's come up with and what he's done in the field to check on it and just kind of walk through what is supposed to happen looking forward.
May I ask, before we get going, because it probably helped with answering some things, you say it's not a major issue on our end, is it on the end? I see there's residents here and typically, and I don't know, typically when you get people here, there's some issue. Is there issues and what are those issues? If you could address those, is there an issue?
Well, first off, I'm interested in the project manager for the village, and I know that I've talked with or worked with, you know, several of you regarding this issue, you know, this is part of it. And so I can just explain that. When we, when we do a new subdivision, we take the whole property and figure out as a whole how it's going to affect, you know, the different areas. So there is a, a master drainage plant that's made up and approved, so we know where the water's going to go, how much water's going to go, and figure out the piping site. So once that's actually agreed upon and approved, and in the master drainage plant is broken down by each parcel or each lot, and each time a home is built, they bring the, a drainage plant that has to match the, the.
Master.
The master drainage plant. It, it needs to match that before it can be approved. And then so once that house is built, the lots are then checked to make sure that it follows the drainage plan. And in order for work, you know, each one of them to work, they all have to follow the master drainage plan. So if you look at the map here, the, the area of concern is this, the, this ditch line that's going to be put in, in between these two streets, in between Prairie Fox Street and Chappel Street. I have drawn out, I have the parcel lines on so you can see where those are. I have the, the elevations, the proposed elevations are on there also. And where, I mean, if we start from the, the west side, if you look at the bottom portion, you can see what the, the red line is the existing line right now, and the, the black line is what the proposed line is, so you can tell which way everything's going to drain. And I put arrows showing which way it's going to drain on the actual plan view.
Next question, interpretation, you have on the red line is the existing swale. It's being proposed to move that to the black line?
Yes.
My question is, knowing, living there for many years, I have a million people, there is exceptions granted to not put that swale in to some people behind those houses. Is that causing the issue of, you can ask the neighbors, my neighbor crosses the street and down the road, even when I help with his cousin, there's a swale that's supposed to go back through there. It doesn't go all the way through because I know one house or the others, they'd have to swale it. So if you start making exceptions to not put a swale in, it becomes less effective.
Now, to go back to what you're saying, there is a master drainage plan for the homes on Chappel.
No, just hang on, are you talking about a home on, this exception on Chappel? Okay, okay.
So this is where I can explain that. And I went through the master drainage plan from Chappel, and everybody has met what they needed to, to have this swale's put in. So at the time, the, the rear lot line didn't necessarily look like it was doing, you can see the arrows, say if you start from the west, the majority of those come out to the sidewalk, because that's what matched the existing field that was moving. But then as you get to the east, some of those, it sheds from, you know, the middle of the lot line towards the rear, and then some, and then the rest of it goes towards Chappel Street. But when I checked those, those didn't match the actual plan, the actual master drainage plan for that section. And when Excel Engineering or the engineering firm did this new subdivision, they came through, you can see the red, the red circle elevations, those are elevations that were existing. So all that stuff, they all matched up with, with what it was supposed to. But with the new subdivision, what's proposed to keep that water from coming onto the Chappel properties, there's going to be a swale that's going to be approximately eight feet off of the property line, and that is the line that you see at the bottom, the black line, where it's going to go down. So any of those arrows from the Prairie Fox properties, before it can get, make it onto the Chappel properties, it's going to be caught in that swale and it's going to be taken to different drains. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I, you're probably going to cover this because I have other questions as obviously we're proposing to do this and that the next question I would go, I would rather have rest of it, who's paying for it?
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't even say, we're not proposing to do this, so to speak, this is what will be done when the homes get built. Like it's, this is their drainage plan, right? It's, it's the new section that's being built. Really, for, for the most part, the old homes on Chappel Street, like Mitch is saying, they're already done. They've been done for years. This, this new swale that's being built is, is on the new properties to the north, so.
So this is act, so the black line is on the north side of the.
Correct, so it's eight feet on to their northern property, if that makes, on north of the Chappel's back lot lines.
So the existing houses that are on Prairie Fox, has that been addressed? Because there's two houses on there right now.
There are three ones.
Three, no?
On here. So, yes, so this aerial photo is, it's a little bit older, so you can see that it's not in there, but unfortunately, the one that I had that they had the street on it, it really did not look very good, so it didn't pay the user. But two of the homes that are on the far east end, there, the swale was placed in between the back of the home and the property line in order to try to keep some of the trees, and it wasn't working. The, the swale was what, it was sitting right outside of the back of their home, and in order to put the swale where it needs to go, trees need to be removed, and the homeowners did that, they moved the swale, and as far as I know, everything is working well. But we could ask them, you know, because they are here right now. Then there is another home at Lot Forty, which is an empty lot, or there's the two homes that I was just talking about on the far east end. And there's an empty lot to the west, and then Lot Forty is that one that's there now. And that one, I don't believe that the final drainage has been completed because of the, the sidewalk wasn't installed yet. And the sidewalk, it wasn't forced to be installed immediately due to the fact that we knew that the street was coming in, and in order to make sure everything worked properly, we were waiting just a little bit on that. But now that the street's in, in new home, it requires to get that sidewalk in, in a certain amount of time to get that in. But one thing that, that seems like it's going to be an issue or that homeowners are mostly concerned about is trying to save the trees. Majority of the trees that are back there are ash trees and they're dying or dead, and the developer has started removing the trees as they become a hazard. And once, but the majority, well, most all those trees aren't going to be removed when each lot is built and the swale needs to be put in there, or when the drainage gets built into it.
Okay, let me ask this if I may. Looking at this and trees, developer can do it, they own it, they're working with you, it's not an issue. With the houses that are on there, it's their property line. Do we have the ability to say, hey, no, we're going to take these trees? Or how do you say for a property owner that I'm going to take your trees?
Well, because they have to meet the drainage plans.
Okay.
That meet, so when we approve the drainage plan, when we go back to that master plan, when we approve that, they have to meet those grades.
Okay.
If there's a way that they can do it and keep trees, you know, that are healthy, then we're, we're all about keeping trees. But in this case, it looks like it's not going to work.
Well, the question I ask, those trees have been there for a while. And then when the drainage plan's approved, how, is that not taken in consideration then when you make the initial drainage plan? Because they've been sitting there for years, those trees, how does that, how does it now affect it and change the drainage plan when those trees were there and when you're doing an original one, you know? Because you're telling me you're having a master before any houses are done, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so we know that, at that point, the trees were not an issue?
No, the trees, they just, the, when they, so this, when this subdivision is developed, you know, twenty years ago, they do master drainage plan for the entire thing, they don't look at trees. They, they're, the developer has an engineer that needs to look at, here's the proposed street layout, here's the land we've got, here's, here's the elevations, how are we going to make this thing drain? And that's the biggest question we have to answer in this area because we're as flat as we are, and we have these issues everywhere. We're, you know, we're, we're just a few feet above Lake Winnebago. So that is probably the number one issue, I would say, that we deal with when we, on a new subdivision. So when they look at the subdivision, they're looking at a forty-acre field, they're not necessarily, they, they, I don't want to say they don't care, but they don't necessarily take into consideration where there's trees and where there aren't trees. They have to lay out the lots, how they're going to sell the most lots, along with, they need to make sure that the drainage works for the entire subdivision. If there's trees in the way, and we, we do run into this a fair amount because people want to save a tree here and there, and we can work with most people if there's, if there's a way we can get around a, a tree here and there, you know, or we can, you know, move the swale a little bit, we can work with them, but in this case, it's pretty much right on where the swale needs to go, all these, it's no fence line basically. And yeah, the trees were there when they developed it, when they made, came up with this plan, I guess to answer your question. So they knew at that point, maybe the trees weren't as big, but at that point, they, you know, they would have assumed that the trees are coming down.
When did it become an issue? Because, you know, here we are, we have one, two, we have a third house that's being on there, when did this become an issue? And then I know I contacted you, Mitch, talking about it, you know, how long ago has this been an issue with, with the drainage back there? And maybe Mike can answer, you've been there, Mike?
I would say ten, fifteen years because a lot of them, some of those blocked like you talked about, and then they redirected that water to the front, and then you guys put some piping underneath the sidewalk and dumped it into the storm. So that some of that drainage was changed a little bit to, to help out, but now they're concerned about, you know, all that water coming from Prairie Fox under their lot and then, you know, on Chappel Street. So it sounds like the swale's supposed to take care of that. Question I got is, are you done, John?
Yeah, I am, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure.
I mean, I think Lot Forty-five might be sold now, and just, let's say if that house gets developed, they put the swale in, the people to the, to the, to the east don't put it in, so they're going to have a pond back there until the water drains? I mean, that's, how's the water get through there until those other lots are developed? It could take, you know, six months, it could take five years for that swale to be completely put in place.
Right, and so I, I, I spoke with the developer about this because I don't want that to be an issue, but because he, he still owns four lots that are in between there, and the water is supposed to drain to the east. But as, as a home is built, they do need to meet the drainage, and whether it is the developer or the excavator for that lot, somebody will need to make sure that that water goes somewhere, because we, we won't allow it to sit, you know, just sitting there with water. And the developer fully understands that. He owns these lots and he knows that he has to make sure that the people that are buying lots are happy, and he has to make sure that, you know, the drainage of the subdivision works completely. So depending on how he sells the lots, that's up to him, but he still has to make sure that the drainage works properly. And if an excavator for a specific home, you know, will do the work, the developer said he is fine with letting them, you know, continuing on to make sure that there is not standing water.
Trench it all the way down to that catch basin, huh? Trench it all the way down to that catch basin, no?
If that's what would be needed.
Between forty-one and forty, correct?
Yep, between forty-one and forty.
And we're gonna make sure that the swales are in and not make exceptions to the, the existing swale that's happened?
Right.
Because that's
What, what exceptions have we made? That's what I, I don't know.
I will tell you when Mike Toasted was here, you asked Dick Meyer across the street.
Okay.
Roseanne O'Connor, there's a swale that's supposed to go back there and that stop.
I was wondering, you're talking, I thought you were talking about the, the
No, not this one.
Okay.
No, the other swale.
Yeah.
My whole point is that we're not making exceptions, saying, oh, that's right, you don't have to put it in.
No.
We have to make sure these swales go in so we alleviate these
Yes.
water problems for everyone else and not just saying, well, it's okay, you don't have to. No, we can't do that. I just wanna make sure that's clear and we're doing that.
And just so, yeah, so you're aware, we don't make exceptions for that anymore. And I, I don't, I guess I don't know when people did. But if, if we notice that something isn't right, we make sure that people fix it because we are so flat and it does become such an issue. And the amount of drainage problems that we have every year, it doesn't make sense to try to, you know, work, I don't wanna say work for you, but to try to, you know, go away from what the actual plan is. Cause it, it never works out.
Well, I agree. The main thing is getting that water. Obviously, there's a whole issue in that area and it's lower than it should be as I told you in the
Yep.
Sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
I don't, I, kinda going back to what Mike had mentioned. I, I forgot to mention this earlier and I, I do believe that this will improve the drainage for the people on Chaplo significantly. When you get this, all that snow and the spring melt, that water just comes, a lot, towards the west end at least, a lot of that water, like Mike, where you live, comes all over those fields and, and drains through the yards and out to the street. This will, will alleviate a lot of that. I mean, not saying a hundred percent cause if it's frozen at the time, that might not fix all of that, but it's going to improve that. I mean, there's going to be a depression from the people on Chaplo's back lot lines and areas down to the swale. So, that water literally would have to come up, you know, a foot or so, that's in some cases to, to get over those lot lines.
Anything else, Mitch? Or, or, do you have something, Mike, or?
Are you gonna open up to the?
Yeah, when Mitch is done, are you, are you down presenting, Mitch? Or is anything else you wanted?
I, so, is there any other questions?
And, any other board members have any questions for me?
I'm just interested to hear from the residents, what, if any issues, if any at all, if you wouldn't mind or?
Yep, I'm, I'm just checking to see if the board
Yep, for us, I'm, and I'm just waiting for them, then I would
Nick, anything else on your end or?
No, I
Okay. All right. Yeah, we'll open it up. If, if you could come up to the podium, please, and just, if you just state your name and address for, for the record, please.
So, I'm Travis Gazy. I live at four eighteen Chaplo. I'm the one where I gotta go on west and east, kind of the, and actually, my biggest concern is, and you're saying the swale's gonna take this away, but if I run my sub pump out to the back, with that field just being there right now, it can't keep up. And I already lost my basement once.
With, with the what? I'm sorry, with the field?
With, with that field just the way it is now.
Okay.
And you're saying like when that person, cause someone bought Lot Forty-five, you're saying when that swale goes in, that's gonna help relieve water back there?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I do have, you would be towards that west end. I do have water that's
Yeah, cause I get, I, my sub pump won't stop. If I go, if I was, put my hose out towards the back,
Yep.
it don't stop. And if we get a heavy rain, I mean, it can't keep up. This last year when we had, in July, we were on vacation and we came back and our basement was flooded from it.
So, do you have water coming, like, running over your grass in the back, over the lot line, like?
Well, I could get standing water in that back.
In that field.
And you can't tell which way it's going.
And right now, it's probably not
And I'm wondering, are we actually getting this drainage that we're supposed to be getting? Cause like I said, it's just sitting back there right now.
Yeah, so, and you're, are you running that?
I'm four eighteen right
Yep, I, I'm trying to read these numbers. Your second one, is it the second one?
Yeah, second one.
Okay. Is your, Mitch, help me out a little bit, but is your sump pump north going to like the corner of the property or to the west side or east side?
Well, I had it going towards the north and then we had that flooding pump.
Yeah, but when you run it towards the north, is it on the west or the east?
It's on the, uh, west side.
So, in the future, that'll go actually west down to that catch basin, correct, Mitch?
Right. Yeah.
And right now, it's probably not going anywhere?
It's not going anywhere, really.
So, for sure, that'll help that water get away, if you can get it back there. I know it's quite a ways to run a, a hose, right?
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I had to run it. But like right now, the way it is, it don't, it don't go anywhere.
It just
So, I'm worried when these people that bought this lot put theirs in, is it still just gonna sit back there?
I would say no. I mean, I'm, and Mitch can
No, it's, if somebody else is, if they put the swale in where it's supposed to, whether it's gonna be, there's, there's another, I guess, we'll just have to look at. Um, you can kinda see it a little better. Um,
Cause I understand, stand, that's supposed to go towards Fair Lawn.
Yep.
My thing is, is I'm worried it's not getting to Fair Lawn.
Oh, it will. I mean, it's, it's got, if, if you look at the elevations there, you're eight sixty-five, that red one. That's where you're at right now. You see that? Seven seventy-eight sixty-five?
Seven seventy-eight sixty, yep.
Okay, that's probably about where you're dumping your sump pump, somewhere in that area.
Yep.
Okay, if you look at that catch basin down there, it's seven seventy-seven oh three. That's, you know, a foot and a half lower than, so that'll be,
Okay.
that'll be a pretty good pitch going west to that catch basin, which isn't there right now because it's just a field, right? It's, that swale's not
Well, yeah, yeah. So, we're waiting.
Yeah. So, and that's something we've, Mitch did reach out to the developer. We're gonna try and work on getting that stuff taken care of so it helps alleviate that. You know, you shouldn't have to sit there and wait till they build that house for your drainage to work properly, right?
Well, I had to put it towards the front too, so, and actually, it's been better since I've done that.
Sure.
But it took me a hard lesson to learn that.
Yeah.
Well, and that's, that's where too, with, with, say this lot, these are supposed to, swales are going to the front because it wasn't supposed to necessarily drain to the back when the master plan was made.
Right.
So, that's one thing. And that's why there's all those drains that are put in behind the sidewalks. I think there's four or five of them now, so on Chaplo because
One.
everything goes, you know, whether it's on the south side of Chaplo or the north side of Chaplo, because I was like to go through the street. And so, we've been putting, you know, the builders have been installing these drains on the sidewalk to catch that so that it's not, it doesn't cause issues with icing or just water.
Yeah, cause we don't, it takes, in between me and Will, it takes us two, three extra days. We still got water pooled up in between our houses.
Yeah.
Cause we, I always get a big ice spot there. We're always laughing here on y'all.
And there, I also don't wanna mislead you and say that all of your issues are anyway. If you have some drainage issues in your yard, that, you know, something that maybe some low spots in that, that may be something you can take care of individually. But as far as the water from the north of you coming across your properties, that shouldn't happen anymore. And I think that has been happening.
Okay.
Especially this time of the year when, when you get a lot of snow and that melt going on, I think some of that water is rough coming into your yard from the back.
So, is that drain currently there, right? Right on the corner, like, to the west of Mike's house? Like, right where, that, that is there?
It was just put in.
Okay.
A year and a half ago.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Anybody else wanna comment?
No. But it works still, no?
It's been working good, yeah. And if, if any, if you guys ever have any questions or concerns at any time when we're here five days a week, I mean, stop in, give Mitch a call, shoot us an email. We're more than happy to come out and, and talk it over.
Okay.
So, one more time, anybody wanna get up and speak on this issue? Alrighty. So, this is, oh, oh, Mike, I'm sorry.
I, I'm just gonna clarify things. I mean, by rights, Chaplo's water is not supposed to run on their back lots either, right? They're supposed to take care of their own water, right?
So to speak, there's gonna be a little bit of that that'll be running.
Over in that area, cause now the drainage plan for most of Chaplo, for the most part, comes to the front. My question is, that storm that's out on Chaplo Street, I know it, when it goes by my house, it's not, it ran out of pitch, you know? Do you know if it's in, that storm is past Mr. Gazy's house? Is, is that storm out there where he could put a catch basin on the side of the wall, sidewalk?
I would have to look at that.
I don't
I don't know if he has, I guess I, I, this, I don't have anything on it.
We did like two or three of those down to the, is that an option for him too? Cause I
If he would, if, if, uh, the homeowners would want to put a drain somewhere in there, we could look at that and we could try to figure out, you know, what the closest availability would be. But I would have, I mean, I'd have to go back to my computer and try to figure that out.
I know on the corner, they didn't have enough to get that far, on the corner of Chaplo and Fair Lawn. They, again, they ran out of pitch on Chaplo Street. But there's a program out there that will help you offset some of that cost. The village will take it from the sidewalk to the street if it's possible. You've gotta apply for it. I'm not sure if they give any assistance on the property owner stuff.
No, so, it's, it's our sewer, our storm sewer lateral. We have a policy for it. You can request a storm sewer lateral if it's available. I mean, not a hundred percent of the areas in the village, you can actually get one because there's not, there's no storm sewer available. We can't get you a lateral. If it's, if we're able to get it to your property line and you apply for it, we usually budget five to ten thousand dollars a year for all the village. And there's an application process. If anybody's interested, it goes to Mitch. Mitch, I think it's like a May, May timeframe. It's, they do by May, we make decisions by June or July. And then the village pays for a hundred percent of the cost to get it to the property line. And at that point, it's, it's the homeowner's responsibility to take it from there if they wanna, if you wanna bury your sump pump, so to speak, or your downspouts and, and direct connect them to a storm sewer underground. We do have a program for that.
Okay. Thank you.
But we're not, I'm not, we're not a hundred percent sure that it's available to you, but you could definitely check into it.
Anything else, Mike?
That's it, thank you.
Alrighty. Anybody else have any questions and comments on this item? Mitch, anything else you wanna add or?
Well, I think we've covered
Okay. And this is just discussion?
Yep.
Okay?
Yep.
Alrighty.
Quick, Mitch, what happens to the other swale? Nothing? Go away? I mean, that's not working anyways, but?
Which other swale?
That red one? You said the existing one?
Well, that's not, yes.
It's not working.
It says existing, but that's basically just the existing ground that's there.
It's not really a swale, it's just the existing ground, the old field.
Well, that's, that's directly above it. So, that, that's just giving me an idea so when you, whether it put in, that's what, how far down it's gonna go. So, if you walk in the background behind the home, um, right where it says existing swale, then that swale's probably gonna be close to a foot and a half, eighteen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion on this one, we'll move on. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I mean, you're free to leave if you wanna or stick around for, we're almost wrapping her up. Moving down to resolutions. Number one, discussion of possible action on resolution four dash twenty twenty-one. A resolution proclaiming Arbor Day in the village of Norafonlak. Do we wanna read this, Nick, or do you just wanna give a?
You can waive the reading. I can just give you, it's just, we, we, this is something we've done every year. We usually celebrate. Guys, if I could get you guys to just sign in before you leave, that'd be awesome. Get your name and address, just so I know who was here. Just one of our requirements for Tree City USA, but of course, we also celebrate Arbor Day in the village. We had been planting trees for the school. Since they remodeled and, and moved things around, we haven't done that. So, what we've been doing the last few years is planting a tree at, at Village Park mainly, or some of our parks, cause we've taken all our ash trees and putting them around playgrounds for shade and things like that. So, we just have always done that.
Okay.
Nick, if we could look at maybe replacing that flag, it's getting a little shaky out there.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Oh, Arbor Day flag, you mean?
Arbor Day flag, I'm sorry, yeah. Anybody have any questions or comments on this resolution? Alright, what is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution hour four twenty twenty-one. Second?
Alright, got a motion by Hoaring, second by Deff to approve resolution four dash twenty